Okay, now we're good.
Still showing no signal up on the board.
Oh, that's my computer.
Okay.
I'm, that's not wrong.
Okay.
Yes.
Called a meeting in order. We'll take the role. The chairman, Ramiro Ross is excused, Michael Norman.
Here.
Okay, Frank Correio is present. Lawrence Stone.
Present.
Lou Pollock is excused. Lawrence Phillips is present. Benjamin Leckley.
Here.
Stephen Day.
Here.
Okay. And Jesus Harrell.
Here.
Staff liaison, Public Works Director is present. Okay, now, a new call to the public. Anybody have anything to say from the general public? Or anyone with a letter in their pocket? Now's your time. We have nothing, so we will move on to old business. And so at this time, we're going to turn it over to the Public Works Director. He's going to give us an update on the Tombstone Canyon project.
So I have a few handouts that you should have. The first one that we were going to look at is the Sunland asphalt proposal. This proposal is, that Sunland came down and did a, an assessment. They're proposing to do a slurry seal, the same as the, that Tucson asphalt, their original proposal was. Their proposal came in at two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, twenty-one cents. That's nearly two hundred thousand dollars less than what Tucson asphalt did. Their slurry seal that they're proposing is a proprietary mix by Seal Master. And you, I gave you all a copy of the cut sheet of that, that material. The limits of the project are the same as Tucson asphalt. So it seems like it's a, a good proposal for, in my opinion. And something that I'd like to try to get done. We'll talk more as we come down here a little bit about how we're going to do that. In addition to the Sunland asphalt proposal, Tucson asphalt did give me a proposal for the green asphalt. The green asphalt, similar to, exactly the same as we did on Bisbee Road. That proposal came in at one million of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents. That's a, a, a large amount to look at.
Yeah, and that's all those adjusting the water meter valves.
Yep, 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 that's, that's, that does.
Additional cost right there.
That does add a lot of money in there because once you put the asphalt, an asphalt overlay, we do have to make adjustments. Any questions on, on those two proposals?
Not on the proposal, what's our time?
Well, again, I mean, we, I can, let me see your paving. Okay, so I can talk about now. So I have a meeting with the city manager and our finance director on Monday afternoon. To figure out where we're at. I mean, I know how much we've spent in our current paving project over in the terraces. I know what the budget line item says that they budgeted for. I need to get with the, like I said, city manager and the finance director to find out if we've got fund balance to, that's available to us. If we do, if we do have fund balance available to us from last year's tax money, we're sitting really pretty. We should be able to do, we should be able to complete our goal of paving this, for this year.
And would that be used for the Tombstone Canyon?
Yes.
Okay. And then the story seal, what's the, how long should that last?
The warranty on it, it says that in their proposal, the warranty on it is for one year for their workmanship. However, story seal usually lasts about five years.
Okay.
Five to seven, you know, but about five years.
Okay, so after that, then the city would need to look at doing an overlay with asphalt or do a story seal again?
Absolutely, and, and again, when, later on in this meeting, I can show you how we, how we're going to go about that when I do the iWork pavement management demo. I can show you how, how we're, how we're going to, years down the road, know what we need to do.
Okay, great.
Okay, and you just answered my question. You got a one-year standard industry warranty?
Yes.
Okay. I have no more questions myself, anybody?
Yes, Ben.
What's the difference in thickness between this Tucson asphalt and the Sunland? Because the Tucson asphalt indicates water valves, meter boxes, manholes, whatever.
Okay, so the proposal that I gave you from Tucson asphalt is a asphalt overlay. So that, when we talk about thickness, when, with, yeah, we're talking an inch and a half. An inch, an inch to two inches, I think, if I remember correctly, when asphalt, when Tucson asphalt came out, I was talking to them about it. They can go with a one-inch lift for the overlay. They still, that's going to, that's why we have to go and adjust manholes and.
It seems that you don't just be.
Correct.
I'd say you wouldn't need to do that with this Sunland.
No, what that does is it's, that's a topical application. Fills in cracks, fills in the voids, and the polymer in that will, will bond it and mix it. It's actually got rubber in it.
So they do crack simply before they do.
Yes, they do.
Now, I'd like to talk to the contractor. Do they take and saw the crack before they seal it, or do they just put it down as it is?
Depends on the crack. If it's, if it's a nice clean crack and they can clean it up, they won't have to saw it. But if they're, if they're real jagged, they will have to saw and clean it up so that way they can clean the crack out.
Right here in the contract says power sweep and clean with compressed air and seal all cracks and cornerings. So what will not be there?
Yep.
Another question I have is, is do you think that this seal coat will give us, let's say, five-year service life? And possibly in that five years, we could find the money to do a mill and overlay on that?
Yes, I, I, yes, I do.
Do you have that goal in mind?
Absolutely, we do, absolutely. With the, when I show you the demo of our pavement management program, you'll, you'll see how, how it works and how it's, we, we can, we can forecast a lot way into the future.
Okay, that's good long-range planning. Okay. Anybody got anything before we go on?
I guess my question is one you've heard maybe for striping. Restriping something like this for either one, you know, just kind of, any opportunities that don't add budget cost? To add bike lanes or additional tourist parking that I would support?
Absolutely, that is, that is what I'm looking for. There, will there be an opportunity to, some of those lanes are larger, wider than normal. I'll be able to narrow those lanes down, create some parking on one side or the other. Narrower lanes also will help with the, with traffic calming. And so that, that absolutely will be able to, to address that.
That's the upper canyon.
Correct, yeah, in, in multiple places, we'll be able to, to do some, some changes to the, from what is currently there.
Are they going all the way up to the end of Highland Avenue, or are they going to stop at the overpass?
No, we're stopping at the overpass where it turns into West Boulevard.
Okay, West Boulevard. Okay, anybody? Okay, let's go to item number two. HIRF dollars versus tax dollars. So, anybody want to take the lead on this?
Well, I think we got a monthly statement for the two months ending August thirty-first, 2019. And it shows expenses. And I'm not sure I saw a revenue sheet. I guess it's other sheet that is the old form, still relying on that for the revenues.
That, that's going to be revenues only from the one percent sales tax. We do get other revenue sources from, from HIRF.
Can we get that number?
Yes, absolutely. I don't have that with me, but for the, I will make sure that we get that to you.
And I think that also, we talked a little bit about this before. And the, skipping down to the old business, the financial update. I don't think anybody here on this committee has a number this month of what the balance might be available for streets and infrastructure.
We do. I'll, I'll, we can, we can get, we can get to that.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, I'm just going ahead.
No.
So, yeah, so I, I'd like to just know every time we convene here, what the balance is, you know, against what the projects are that we're, you know, supporting. And then we can go month by month maybe like that. Because the numbers are all over the place.
Yes, we can, we can.
Okay, great.
Okay, anybody else?
I think in regards to the new accounting practice of the city, of taking a percentage out for overhead costs, like labor, electricity, those sorts of things. At some point, it would be nice to see, you know, what they're taking out of other funds and make sure there's not overlap. They're not taking from here, taking from there. That adds up. So if they're, I think they're establishing what I would call an overhead rate of a certain percentage, right?
So what you want to, you want to see the percentage that is taken from?
Well, if they're taking.
That we're paying for labor.
Other departments, exactly, yes.
We don't, we don't pay anything for other departments out of this one.
Right. But, but I'm saying if they're taking a percentage from, from streets and infrastructure, from Public Works, and then they're taking a percentage from other, other departments, that they all equal one hundred percent. Or some sort of factor that can be accounted to on the big picture.
So there should be a uniform overhead rate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, there is, there is nothing that should be paid from streets that does not have to do with streets and infrastructure.
Right.
We might need to check this analogically. I think what you're talking is about because there are some restrictions on the one percent sales tax money. So, you know, in order to cover like the cost of like the people we take from other areas of the city to use to do the streets with, there's a percentage of that one percent that legitimately should come out of that. Because it is being used to pave and repair streets.
And, and also.
So that, that, that's why I'm not arguing about too much. You have, there, and you know, the only question I would have would be maybe if there was some sort of an itemization a little bit, maybe someone down the road, somebody just said, just took a look at it, you know, how many hours, somebody just keep track of the actual amount of hours somebody works. They probably already do, but.
Yeah, or, or maybe it's a fraction of the overall bunch of hours.
What I'm thinking is the percentage is just an easier way to do that than having to keep track of everybody's hours every month constantly. So it's just, they just do, look at it over a few months ago, it's pretty much this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not arguing whether or not it's, it's a bad thing. It's just that when they take parts from each, that the overhead doesn't.
Some of the HIRF funds goes to that, some of the Edward B. funds go to that, so some of each of the funds go to.
That it equals a hundred percent or.
A hundred percent hopefully.
Well, I think maybe what you were trying to express was that i- if we're going to pay twenty-two percent toward the overhead, which is kind of what the number is, a hundred and ninety thousand on a million two or something. Then, what's the wastewater treatment? What are they paying?
Okay, yeah, if you would, if you want to see that kind of thing, absolutely. So the, the financial report, monthly financial report that you get for streets, I get the same thing for every one of my divisions within Public Works.
Right.
And so if you want to see a comparison of that, we can, absolutely, we can, I can provide that to you.
Yeah, because I'd heard a rumor that maybe that wasn't uniform across all of the departments in the city. That maybe streets and infrastructure was paying, you know, twenty percent, and wastewater treatment was paying ten percent.
Well, wastewater has three employees, streets has four employees.
But the, but the, but the amount of overhead that you're getting from each department should be the same. If it's, if it's ten percent for wastewater, shouldn't it be ten percent for streets and infrastructure?
The, the overhead that you're.
Not of, not of the whole city, but just of the, how do you calculate that we owe a hundred and ninety thousand, our share of?
Well, that doesn't, we don't owe it to anybody because we owe it to our employees and we, we use that, that money to pay for gloves. We use it for the, for fuel, for our vehicles. We, it doesn't go anywhere. We don't give it to, it doesn't come out of our, it, it doesn't come out of the streets budget until we go to pay a bill. It doesn't go to anything.
I'm not talking about the million two budget. It's the budget for streets and infrastructure.
You're talking about the one percent sales tax.
Now, that's part of the million two. HIRF is.
Yes, yes.
Is.
That's the other portion.
Five hundred thousand, let's say.
Yes.
And the one percent sales tax is seven hundred thousand, let's say. And that's a million two.
Yes.
Let's say. And then out of the million two, there's expenses.
Yes.
And all of those expenses, we understand, are direct costs for streets, except for the one hundred and ninety thousand dollar transfer to the general fund to support the overhead.
Yes.
Your term is general fund transfer.
Yeah, that's what I think.
So what, what you're talking about are the indirect costs? Or overhead, which is basically.
You're talking about the general fund transfer that has to support administrative costs for.
Exactly.
Right, well, okay, I see.
You want to see some of that, okay, I understand what you're asking for.
So, so if that a hundred and ninety thousand is what percentage of a million two? It's not twenty percent, but let's, whatever it is, is, is that number uniform across all of the departments in all of the city?
I wouldn't think so, but I, I couldn't answer that question.
Well, why would it be more for streets and infrastructure?
It would be different for different departments because they require more administrative. They, they require more, you know, different, different.
Yeah, sure, well, okay, but I.
It just depends on what they require. I, I couldn't, I can get, look, I can look into that story.
Right, well, I, I'd heard that that was, you know, concerning to somebody.
Let me, let me kind of, since I know what you guys want to know is, and if my memory serves me well, the city charter doesn't make any requirements that all departments be assessed the same percent. And I think what the director is saying is that due to the, the cost of operating the department, their percentage is higher than water treatment or some other department who doesn't require as much cost.
And I haven't looked at that, that line item closely enough to tell you whether one depart, one division of Public Works or one budget pays more than the other, or who pays the most, so we, we can look at that. I, I understand what you're asking for, so we can look at that.
Well, once we get, know what the number is, I mean, you know, you know, it's, is, anyway, yes.
I have a question. Are you concerned in your question that there is a possibility of double payment? Two separate entities paying the same bill and the right hand not knowing what the left hand is doing?
Uh, yeah, that would be correct. The, the, but, but not out of, not out of any malice, just out of, just out of not knowing what the numbers are. And just guessing.
Double billing?
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that they're, they're trying to collect more than a hundred percent of their operating costs. But I have some concerns. I mean, I don't think, I know it doesn't cost them any money to collect the money, the revenue side of this. They're not sending out bills to five thousand, you know, households saying, this is what your sewer bill is this month. And, you know what I'm saying? It just appears that HIRF money is this and a one percent sales. So it doesn't cost them anything to collect the money. So on the revenue side, the cost of operating this is zero.
Correct.
And then on the expense side of it, don't they just turn all of the money over to the, to the Department of Public Works, million two?
Correct.
So, uh, this costs a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year to oversee the dispersment of a million two? Right, and it's not even a million two because it's really only six hundred, seven hundred and twenty thousand we call the income from the one percent sales tax. Because the HIRF money was always there and it was always being overseen.
Yes.
Yeah. And so now comes another six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is where I came up with the twenty percent number. And so in order to oversee the six hundred and seventy thousand dollar, one percent sales tax, the city wants streets and infrastructure to pay a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year to oversee the dispersment of that, which is basically giving it to streets and infrastructure, giving it to Department of Public Works.
You would have to talk to the finance director to know exactly where that dispersment goes to.
The marginal cost of, of administering the six hundred and seventy thousand dollars is practically nothing.
It's, it's, that, that number, I believe, is the cost for the entire, it doesn't, it's, it's the cost for administration for the entire thing, including HIRF. It doesn't, it's.
Well, yes, but the HIRF was being administered before there was a hundred and ninety thousand dollar transfer out of streets and infrastructure in HIRF. I don't know how much was being taken out of HIRF before.
I couldn't tell you.
Exactly, so we, you know, the numbers are kind of fuzzy. We'd like to bring the numbers into focus.
Okay.
Exactly, and I, I think that's where it is. Because I think the concern is, because what we're talking about are indirect costs, the cost for administrative side. That they're not direct costs related to the paving project. So I think the concern is that whenever you have a pot of money, like a special tax fund for paving streets, it can be tempting to use that fund to subsidize other city operations and maybe underfund it. So, you know, I think part of the role of a meeting like this is to make sure that the funds are being spent appropriately on the, what voters are voting for. And make sure that we're not inappropriately necessarily subsidizing other functions of the city that weren't authorized under either HIRF or the, the sales tax. So it's kind of a transparency thing, understanding, you know, the percentage, what it is, and, and kind of how that percentage, the overhead or the indirect cost percentage was, was calculated. So we can say, yeah, that's, that's fair, that's reasonable, to cover the cost for HR, for accounting, for city manager's office, for maintenance of the city buildings, that sort of thing. Those are all things that are indirectly related to supporting the mission of, of paving streets. That's kind of, I think.
Is that right, Larry?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure HIRF does allow being, paying for administrative costs, but, you know, it has to be fractional to whatever those actually are.
Yeah, most, most funding, you know, grant funds, that sort of thing, they do allow for a certain percentage that can go towards, you know, indirect costs. My experience with, you know, federal grant funds is usually you can use up to ten percent without having a indirect cost study.
Right. And we're over that?
Yeah, we're around sixteen.
Right, well, and what the point I was making was that prior to 2015, when the one percent sales tax came into being, there was still money that was being spent to oversee the allocation of HIRF funds alone without the one percent sales tax. And after 2015, when the one percent sales tax came into being, then there was, I imagine, a marginal increase in that overhead cost number. And I believe that, to me, it seems as though the amount of increase in the marginal cost of the overhead deduction was out of proportion to the six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of income that was being generated by the one percent sales tax that was being dedicated to streets and infrastructure.
Okay, I under, I understand where, where we, what we need to do. I will get with, I will get with the, the finance director and we can get a answer that satisfies the question.
Right. Well, and then together with maybe learning a number, I, you know, so I've heard people say as much as, well, maybe we have a million, or maybe we have seven hundred and fifty thousand, well, we were really only budgeted to spend five hundred thousand. So the numbers of what would be available for expenditures on streets and infrastructure, I've heard go from five hundred thousand to a million. But that's not very tight to me. So this, I, I think every month there should be a number.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Anybody else? Okay, we will, we're to item number three, paving update. Jesus, you want to take that?
So, again, one, one of your handouts I gave you, there's a sheet, looks like this, with some highlights on there, it says paving, pavement project. So we completed our paving at the terraces area of Warren. With that, we spent two hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and one dollars and forty cents on asphalt. That does not include any labor or anything. This is what we spent on asphalt. The, the roads that we are looking at doing next are Briggs Road from East Vista to Arizona Street. Uh, De Autrement from East Vista to Arizona Street. And then Quality Hill, there's a section that was not paved when they last did it, completed it. And that is at the southeast section. So you come up the hill, you start coming back down on the backside. It, it does, it needs to get paved. So those are the next three roads that we would like to do. That is really dependent on what happens with the Tombstone Canyon. You can see that we spent two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars on the terraces. In our line item for the one percent sales tax, it shows that we have, they budgeted five hundred thousand. This is where I need to go and meet with the city manager and the finance director to see if we have that, that fund balance that's available to us. If we do have that fund balance, we should be able to complete Tombstone Canyon and these three roads. If we don't have fund balance, you, you received that proposal from Sunland. We would be going over budget slightly, just by doing Tombstone Canyon. So after my meeting on Monday, I should have a clear picture on what we can do. I hope that we, that everything turns out the way I, I think it should be. We should be able to do Tombstone Canyon, these three roads. Those three roads will, additional roads will be approximate, approximate at forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. And then if, whatever fund balance, if, if we do have that fund balance, whatever is next, we'll go on with these next roads. They're here, they're listed as extra roads to pave.
Yeah, I, I just want to say the, those extra roads to pave, I don't know if you guys have been on them, but they're pretty, they're beyond the last. They're, they're pretty bad.
I, I would agree.
Steep.
I, I would, I would agree. We definitely need to evaluate the, you know, traffic also. There, there, I, I agree that some of these roads, all of these roads that are on here on this list, they need to be paved. We need to get them done. So we'll definitely do our best to get them done as quickly as possible.
With the completion of De Autrement, that's going to do Warren, isn't it? Basically.
There are still a few, well, De Autrement and Briggs, and then there is Douglas Road, I believe.
Douglas Street.
Douglas Street.
Yeah.
It's behind the, the old Public Works building. That's, that's another one that needs to be done. But again, we got to, we have to, we only have so much, the, a limited amount of, of funds that we can do. And so we'll do our best to get everything we can.
Yeah, because there's a, to Vista to Bisbee Road, there's.
And actually Briggs, and actually Briggs and De Autrement, both of them, they aren't, they aren't all the way. They, we're, we're just doing the worst section of those. Because we, we could go all the way to Bisbee Road. And, but when Matt, Matt Gurney and myself, we went and assessed those, we looked them. We said, hey, that's, these are the bad sections. Let's get these and let's get, let's try to get the worst section of these so we can get this done, so. This is, this is where we're at for this year and, and hopefully we get to, we get to, get to our goal.
This is just for, you mentioned Douglas Street, and I just made me think that's a big, wide.
It is.
Straight. And it give you the opportunity to do some enhancement there. Do whatever, in what form that would take, I don't know. But you could do, if there's a parking problem somewhere in that area, you could do, you know, something creative with all that extra wide open space.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of dirt on the upside. And if you pave that, all that migrates down onto your pavement and causes premature wear, you know, causes it to wear prematurely. I'm sure you're aware of that, but just a little bit of opportunity there might appear when you go to pave that.
Have you been on Campbell Avenue between first and second?
I'd have to look at it. Can we look at that? They can pull it up. I'd have to look at it, can we look at that? They can pull it up.
Oh, yeah, runs right parallel with it.
That's the one you sent me, didn't you? I have been on it, um. Is it Street?
Avenue.
Avenue.
Right across the street from the Campbell chat.
Oops, oops, spinning around here, sorry. So we're talking about right here, this section. Right here?
No, the other way, no, I'm sure you're right, yeah, that way, yep, that's one.
Well, they all kinda needed.
Well, all of those roads in Bakersville got paved eight years ago, except Campbell Avenue between First and Second.
Okay, I'll I'll, I can add that so that we can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Does that, is that street on a steep slope?
No, it's flat and has a drainage problem, uh fills up with water, um, and it rains like it did the other day. And it hasn't been re, it's, like I say, every place else in Bakersville has been paved except Campbell Avenue between First and Second. And it's just about dirt, see, well, let's see, that's, there you go, right. It's gravel, dirt, uh at some point, it's been narrowed to uh less than eight feet by the Dr. Julie's Medical Clinic on the corner of Second and Campbell Avenue, there's dirt and palm fronds and everything else in the road, a six-foot wall.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely, we'll we'll take a look at that.
Okay, depends, everybody happy with the paving update? Okay, we're gonna go to item number four. And to the financial update.
I apologize, I didn't have, I didn't bring the the monthly report.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of that?
I got this one, is this the latest one that we had?
So one thing we did, we had the. That's, what what month is that?
August thirty first.
Yeah, first two months of fiscal year twenty twenty nine.
Yes, that's, we haven't got, we didn't get a September, we don't have a September, if you wanted, if you want, I can kinda go over that really quick.
Uh, okay, well, uh, we can, uh, this is the one everybody's had before.
You guys have, you guys have seen this before?
Yeah, we got it last time, last week.
So, yeah, so what I do, just for finance, for for your information, and what I do is with my uh division heads, we go over this sheet um altogether, and what I, first thing we do is we look at that, the far right um column and look at any kind of, it shows the percentage, and then we can see on the bottom that we've, we through August thirty first, we were seventeen percent of the way through the fiscal year, the budget year. Um, and we go through and we pick out anything that looks way out of proportion, it's white, so this, in this one, um, it looks like there's um repair and maintenance other, and this one's at sixty-seven percent. Um, I couldn't tell you exactly what that is right now, um, but that line item was only budgeted one thousand dollars and we spent we spent six hundred and seventy-five, so I I wouldn't, it it, something like that, we would, what was it? And I don't see that that being a a big, a big number there. Another one that comes up is um non-capital admin, non-capital admin equipment and furniture. Um, again, that's furniture, it was only a thousand dollars that was budgeted in it, we spent eight hundred dollars. So I wouldn't really see, see anything um out of the normal there, but that's the way we we go over our budget, and again, this was something that you guys have seen last year, uh last year, last month, so um I don't have the the newest one, so when we get that newest one, we can, we can do the same thing I do with my division, at least we can look at that and you guys can pick out something that looks odd to, something that sticks into your, sticks out, and we can talk about that, if that's okay?
Okay, and everybody's got their copy of the uh materials cost if they're paving. Okay, it's pretty much self-explanatory right now. We've got uh, close to a half a million dollars uh total. Any questions on it?
That's the number you just said you're gonna confirm with finance?
Well, I can tell you right now, that one's gonna be a little different from what finance has because because of that, but so finance, in in our budget, you can see on on the the financial report, it'll say that it was, we had five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for our materials in that line item, that's the one I'm gonna say, I want to confirm that we have fund balance from last year that we can use.
Has the price of asphalt taken a hike?
Yeah, well, here, I can show you, well, I I we.
Just off the top of your head.
Nine, nine dollars and fifty-four cents is what it costs to pave a cubic uh cubic yard, not cubic, square yards, I apologize, at a at a two-inch lift.
That's a comprehensive cost, you're just.
That's what, that's what it costs for asphalt, we pay, we pay eighty-five doll, eighty-five dollars a ton. Um, from from, eighty-five dollars a ton, it turns out to be nine dollars fifty, I believe nine fifty-four a square yard, a square yard to pave.
Well, I didn't expect the gas prices to go up, but no.
I believe last year when they paved, they were paving at eighty, eighty dollars a ton, so we're paying eighty, we paid eighty-five dollars.
That was when they first started paving, it was eighty, it's been about, was that what?
Yeah, so that's what it costs, and I can show you, um, when we do this demo, I can show you where that, where we get that input from.
Where is the the tar coming from Tucson?
Sierra Vista, Sierra Vista. Yeah, K E N G.
K E N G's got a batch plant. And uh, thank God for them, and uh, I don't know how their business has been lately, but I hope we're keeping them in business.
Yeah, they they seem to be doing pretty well.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Sierra Vista's expanding, so.
They are.
But they, yeah, well, I mean, they're always putting in parking lots and stuff.
When I first looked at these numbers on uh ten twenty-five eighteen on the remaining Warren work, it seemed like it was uh uh exactly almost a one dollar per square foot of blacktop, that's how it.
That's pretty close, we're do, we're doing um square, we're doing square yards, so if you divide that by nine, you're getting close.
So there you go.
Okay, anything else on financial update, anybody? Okay, you're up, Ben, parking plan.
I can, I, I can talk, you know, Ben and I, Ben and I met and uh we discussed some of the parking plan and we came up with a few options that um I'm going to um present to the, to the uh city council. So what we found was that the easiest, the lowest hanging fruit was that we just sometimes people didn't know exactly where the public parking was. So I'm gonna be adding some parking signs, directing some parking, um, there we'll add, so there's some public parking right here on um on Tombstone Canyon, just uh, what is that, east of Clausen, I guess, there's, so here's Clausen, there's some public parking in here, and so when we go and we get people that are driving around Main Street, Tombstone Canyon, Subway, they might not know that there's parking there, so we're gonna add some parking directing them, hey, there's additional parking over there. Um, the other thing is that there is public parking, uh, where is that, right here? Uh, Sheer Avenue, there's some pub, we have public parking there. Um, there are people that, again, that's kind of behind those buildings, they don't know that there's parking there, so I'll add some, again, some directional signs showing where the public parking is. The big one here is that uh I'm gonna propose that I'm gonna reverse the one-way of Sheer Avenue. Right now, it's it's one-way down the hill. If I add the public parking signs, directional signs over here, maybe in Tombstone, Tombstone Canyon area somewhere, and then direct them up Sheer Avenue so that they can find these public parking place places. That may, you know, uh, may the the business owners there may um have some shock to it. However, I think that it's gonna be better it for them, because they're gonna get more traffic, they're gonna get traffic going up the hill, and then the people walking back down the hill, so they're gonna see that, so. Um, in addition to that, and so we'll add some, one up up in here in the Sheer Avenue, Clausen area, we'll add some directional signs to help people get back to um Tombstone Canyon and then maybe back over here using um Taylor Avenue to get onto Brewery Avenue. So we'll add some signs to help out to find where the existing parking is. With reversing Sheer and having park, having going up the hill instead of down the hill, that reduces the need to have this little section between Sheer and Tombstone Canyon before it turns into Main here. This is a two-way, two-way section of of Subway. Everything here is one-way, so that'll allow me to change this all to one-way Subway. That section is wide, so I'll stripe some edge lines so that we can add, I mean, I can zoom in here some, uh, we're gonna add some edge lines so that we can have some um um angled parking right here next to this building here. This, that will still, will still have plenty of space for them to drive around there. I think I can get maybe four to six spaces, because this next thing I wanna do is, we know here that on Tombstone Canyon, the edge line is marked right here, there is no edge line on the other side. So I'm gonna add edge lines there, and then there's two parallel parking spaces right there, I'm gonna change those to angled parking too, so we can get a couple more spaces there. That's, that's, you know, that's what I'm gonna present uh to the council, um, and.
So you go up Sheer to the parking, how do you get out of there over the top and then down?
You can, we can go both, we can go two ways, we can use.
Right, Tac Avenue, that way you get tow truck tires.
Tac, you know, the the other thing that the the police chief asked me to look at is maybe turning Tac into one-way so that we can, we can have them just come down here, if they're coming up.
One way going down is the best.
Coming down Tac, coming down Tac one-way, and then up one-way going Sheer, so we can.
Tac going up is actually, I've seen people get stuck in that little.
We put a railing, uh, we put a railing, where it goes in, there's like a little trick spot, they put a railing up there, um, a couple.